November eighth, two thousand seventeen. And the first item under Admin Matters is a reminder about the Virginia School Board Association Annual Convention next week in Williamsburg. We do have ten of our members who are signed up to attend the convention, and we're looking forward to attending the workshops and hearing the speakers next week. We will have a closed meeting later this evening. I'm not sure if we'll be able to get to it before the formal meeting, or if we'll have to do it afterwards, but we'll have to judge our time and see how much time we have left. But it will be concerning some legal matters. And Mr. Edwards, I know you have an announcement to make about a deferred compensation meeting.
Right. The city council is going to be receiving a briefing on some potential changes in the deferred cop plan that we have, that Farrell and I sit on that as members of that. And they are right now looking at a briefing on December twelfth, which is not one of our school board meeting days, but it's when it will fit on their schedule. So it will likely not be scheduled as a special meeting by us for us because that won't be required. When we meet like in the five-year forecast, we don't, you know, Diane doesn't come and take minutes or anything like that. But we would be invited to sit in, and I would recommend those people that can make that work, try to do so. Don't have a firm time or place, but it would be likely mid-afternoonish on the twelfth, someplace in the municipal center. They're still working on the specific venue for the briefing.
And it's just on deferred compensation?
Yes. And we would be taking, we would be then following up probably with a, another briefing either in a workshop or the information agenda, and then actually potentially taking action early next year.
Does anyone else have any, any information or announcements at this time? Ms. Ryan?
This is real quick. It's a shout-out, this dates back a month ago, to the Neptune Festival and the fact that we had four high school bands participating, and I just thought they deserved a shout-out. Salem, Pimpsville, Cox, and Bayside. And what I thought is particularly is that the, both the Salem and Bayside directors have shared that they themselves had been in the parade as students, and that's Jonathan Dugan and Brian Webb.
Anyone else have information or announcements? Ms. Ruth?
I hope everybody read the, about the meeting for where we're going with our schools and building them in the, the open, the opening to the public to come on the twelfth and the thirteenth.
Steering committee.
Yeah.
The silly steering committee, committee to our buildings.
Right.
And to get the input. So I hope everybody read that. It's important that you see that and try to at least come to one of them.
Right. Do you have the dates?
The dates, the twelfth and thirteenth.
Of?
Next week.
Next week.
Yeah. And the locations are going to be at?
ODS. Yeah, Callum and ODS.
And ODC or S.
ODS.
Interesting venues if you're assessing how bad, how bad our schools are and what we need to do about it.
So anyway, they're going to be there. And you have, we got information on it, so go back and look in your emails and check out.
Right. I was just thinking for public purposes to announce that.
Yeah, and I'll say that.
And I'm unable to attend that, so if someone else could go, I mean, because Turner and Turner will be there, and she and I both serve on that committee, but it'd be great.
And I think Sharon, you're on that committee too as well.
I'll be on both.
Ms. Felton, sorry.
Yeah.
Let me piggyback on that.
Excuse me, Ms. Ruth.
When I saw that.
It's the thirteenth and fourteenth, not the twelfth and thirteenth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, the thirteenth and fourteenth?
Thirteen and fourteen.
I'm sorry.
The thirteenth is at Callum, I believe, and the fourteenth is at Old Dominion.
Because I had it.
Old Nation School, excuse me.
Yes.
Anyway, when I saw that, I asked Dr. Bergen to shoot me the list of steering committees. And I don't think, I mean, I don't remember seeing it, but when I, I did get it, and I am, kudos to the administration, or if there's somebody on the board here who helped put it together. But it is an incredibly strong panel, including two city council members, Provost Mike Summers from the TCC, a lot of the Chamber of Commerce, Virginia Beach Chair.
Students. Students are all there.
Yeah, yeah. Dr. Snid, thank you, and again, if anybody else, everybody, anybody else that was involved with their fingerprints on it. Nice job, incredibly important panel, as Mrs. McLeod knows, and glad to see it's headed off in the right direction.
It is open to the public. That's what it's for.
The dialogues about, a decade ago was good, and it was very helpful is for them to understand the how, the process. I still remember one of my, was that we were at Bayside High School, and they got to go and do some ranking and all this kind of thing of priorities, and it always impressed Terry Rick, Terry, that's with DeJean Richter, Richter, that, that, that the Bayside parents noted and recognized, or the community noted that Callum needed to be done before their high school. Usually people are territorial, so it's, it's important to be there and help them understand the information and get the dialogues.
Does.
I'll add one more thing to that. People always think, you know, well, why wasn't Princess Island High School the next one? Because it is the oldest. And they take into account many things, not just the age, but the year it was constructed, the modernization of it, the building area, occupancy, educational adequacy, school facility condition, percent under, over capacity. There's a, there's a big chart that shows all the things that they use. So it's really informative.
So is this study or review preceded by the same analysis that was done ten years ago? Because that's?
They're redoing it. They're updating.
They're, they're, okay. Outstanding.
And it needs to be done. No. New, new information. Okay. Any other announcements or information? So you, just, Ms. Manning, just, just for informational purposes, Mr. Edwards did note that we probably will be invited, we will be invited on December twelfth, if you want to just mark your calendar sometime in the afternoon with a joint meeting with city council for deferred compensation plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we're ready next to go for our next part of our workshop with just legislative agenda for two thousand eighteen General Assembly session. Mr. Andrews?
Our team, Joel Andrews today.
Mr. McDonald?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman Anderson. Chairwoman Anderson. We do have Joel Andrews with us from Kipper Consulting, who is our trustee legislative advisor lobbyist, all-around good guy. The Legislative Committee is pleased to present to you in this workshop a two thousand eighteen legislative agenda. A lot of the content of this agenda is carried over from previous years, where we continue to remind our delegation of where we stand on certain issues. I'm going to provide just a brief rundown of legislative agendas. This is a document that we sent, had sent out earlier to the board, and it has not changed since that email's gone out and by consensus approved it this afternoon. As we normally do, we begin with the budget, and we specifically point out that Virginia's spending on instruction is nine percent less in K-12 instruction than it was in two thousand and five, and it is a per pupil funding decline by six hundred and twenty-eight dollars per pupil. Oftentimes, we have conversations about K-12 spending and what it, what our student population looks like, if we're growing, if we're, if we are declining. So the per pupil point there, I think, is extremely important. In this budget section, we're not necessarily, you know, we point out that we've lost funding, but the major area of the budget that we're looking at for this upcoming session is re-benchmarking. In the summer of odd number of years, VDOE provides the governor and General Assembly with an estimate of re-benched cost of continuing to provide direct aid to public education programs for the next biennium. Basically, they are trying to, well, the numbers would shore up what it, what it would actually cost to provide SOQ funding to us. Of course, we, we support the full funding of the biennial re-benchmarking and standards of quality funding formulas, because we think that's fair and appropriate. The next step is a budgetary as well, which is uncapping instructional support positions on the SOQ. This we've had before. These are uncapping positions such as social workers, school counselors, school psychologists, and instructional support personnel. This addition, this, this really is additional funding that would go directly into classrooms and give teachers additional resources to support students. Unfunded mandates, we talked about from year to year. As of September two thousand seventeen, we updated our unfunded mandates document, and it showed that the unfunded mandates of VBCPS was forty-four million dollars. Of that forty-four million, approximately sixteen million are mandates from the General Assembly. Bottom line, we support the elimination of unfunded mandates. Special education funding. VBCPS has more than seventy-nine hundred students who qualify for special education services. Fiscal year two thousand sixteen, we spent more than a hundred and six point one million, or approximately thirteen thousand four hundred per qualified student. We are opposed to any change in delivery of special education services or special education funding that would shift an even larger portion of funding to the locality. A large portion of our unfunded mandates is actually special education services. VBCPS supports efforts by the Virginia General Assembly to work with our federal delegations and encourage the U.S. Department of Education and Congress to fully fund their portion of special education services in Virginia. Historic note, IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, has never been one hundred percent funded.
Yes.
Correct. And so, and I was, I was pleased to see we had Mrs. Felton in with us today, who is our delegate to the VSBA convention, that the VSBA is adding specific language to their legislative proposals that are asking for full funding of IDEA as well. Lottery fund usage. VBCPS supports the additional flexibility provided through recent investments in lottery proceeds. We're opposed to any measure that would shift the standards of quality or other reoccurring costs to the lottery funds, and we believe that the lottery fund should be used exclusively to supplement current public education funding and not be used to supplant ongoing SOQ-funded programs. But we do acknowledge that there's been additional flexibility in lottery funds, which has been useful, and we would just like to see that continue and grow. In dual enrollment, this has been something we've been talking about for a bit. VBCPS supports legislation and/or regulatory reforms that would allow school divisions and local community colleges to negotiate individual rates for public school students who through their local division, through their local division to take in dual enrollment courses to the local community college. If that sounds, like we've talked about this before, it was an item that we submitted to the VSBA as part of their legislative proposals, which they did accept, which will be voted on at the conference later this month. We also support the establishment of clear transfer mats for each public four-year institution for dual enrollment courses. We want to ensure that courses that students take as dual enrollment course will actually lead right into their further higher education career. So that's been a, an interesting conversation to be a part of, dual enrollment and higher education. Continued reform of the assessment system. We support legislative, legislation responsive to recommendations by the SOL Innovation Committee and that reforms Virginia SOL assessments by focusing on authentic growth measures. That committee's done some excellent work, and we've been happy to see that the, the General Assembly has, has followed their recommendations. We also support the reduction of the number of required tests. We support legislation that allows school divisions to replace current SOL assessments with performance-based assessments. And then we also support teacher, principal, and superintendent accountability systems that include additional measures such as student participation and performance and advanced placement courses and postgraduate measures. So basically, just trying to get a fuller picture of the success of students. A new item on our legislative agenda is flexibility for, for addressing teacher shortages. And there's a, an explanation here, but the bottom line is that we support a moratorium on any new requirements for teacher licensure and recertification, as well as streamlining the licensing process by allowing for more electronic submission of documentation. There has been a number of headaches in the licensure process that is being discussed at the state level, and so we are supporting efforts to improve that. Mandatory funding of virtual school. We are opposed to any legislation that require any portion of state or local funding to follow with the student. When the student chooses to enroll in virtual school outside his or her school division, we support online blended models that incorporate the individual needs of a student, as well as a full-time state-operated virtual learning program through Virtual Virginia. Charter schools, we've talked about in the past. Basically, if there's going to be a charter school established inside the boundaries of Virginia Beach, the public schools, we want to ensure that there's a partnership between us as a school division and the charter school. And so we are opposed to any legislation that would remove the local school board's authority to establish charter schools within its boundaries, including any change to Virginia constitution or legislation that would give the Virginia Board of Education the authority to create regional charter schools. Inter-scholastic athletic programs by non-public school students. We continue to oppose legislation that would allow non-public school students to participate inter-scholastic programs in public schools. Rationale is that it creates an unlevel playing field. Student safety. We believe in positive behavioral supports. This definitely reflects the work of the school division now to help students learn self-discipline while holding them accountable for their actions and keeping our school safe. We oppose limiting options to safely manage schools, including the ability to suspend students whose behaviors warrant such action. And while we work to keep our students with us more by reducing out-of-school suspensions, we will also help students build resiliency and coping skills through alternate, alternate disciplinary practices. And we support legislation that promotes alternatives to suspension and funding at the elementary level to support those alternatives. And we acknowledge this work is complex, takes, takes time, patience, and flexibility. That's direct outgrowth of the conversation that was had in Richmond and the conversation we had here locally about bills that were trying to tie the hands of school divisions as far as suspensions go. And in this, and this, there's actually a set of proposals being looked at by VDOE doing exactly what we wanted them to do, was try to establish best practices for student discipline. And, and a lot of those proposals really do align with the work that Virginia Beach is doing, which is good to see. So that was a quick rundown of that. Open it up for any questions, comments, and concerns. Yes, sir?
The only question I have is under charter schools in the, like, third line from the bottom of the paragraph, would remove the local board's authority to establish charter schools? That implies that we would have to be the establishing authority as opposed to concurring or agreeing to the establishment by?
Approving.
A third party. Green Run collegiate sort of, of an anomaly among charters, and you could almost argue that maybe we did establish that, but most charters are not. So it seems like that ought to be worded slightly different to allow the establishment by a third party. And again, this is not, you know, I'm not trying to come up with the exact wording now because we, that can be done offline, but I think it ought to allow for, require our concurrence with the establishment of the local board.
Would the word approval be a more appropriate?
Yeah.
In this situation?
Authority to approve charter schools?
Yeah.
I think that fixes it in one quick swipe. Thank you.
So approval instead of authority?
Yes. Instead of establishment.
Instead of establishment, yeah.
Twenty-two.
We are opposed to any legislation that would remove the local school board's authority to approve charter schools within its boundaries.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Good catch. Thank you.
I like that better, too.
This mail.
And the rest of that, so, so we want to still have approval and work with, like we do Green Run, and then, and the, any change that would give the Virginia Board of Education the authority to create regional charter schools? So, and, so like, what is CSEP considered? It's a regional?
That is?
That's not a charter school.
That's not a charter.
So why do we, do we not want that? Because then the localities wouldn't have to say? Or what's going to happen when, like, what, what is wrong with a regional school?
That is a reaction to legislation that we saw last year that really threaded, or at least tried to thread the constitutional needle of who can and cannot establish school divisions versus schools and all of that. And what it gave the board at the, the authority to do is to establish basically a regional charter school division, if I remember correctly. I don't have it in front of me right now.
Like a whole division.
Which was?
Division after that.
Which was kind of threading the constitutional needle of what they can and cannot do. And so this was sort of a reaction to that specific legislation of not only do not want the, the constitutional authority removed, we don't like this other model that has also been tried that would still have the same effect, which would be to remove the local school board's authority on these issues.
Okay. Okay. That's what I thought it did. I've got a couple of questions on other stuff. Do we just go in and out, or do you want to take the first thing and go down?
Let's just go.
You want to keep going?
Lead us wherever you like.
And you will follow. Thank you. Well, I think, I mean, it looks really pretty, and I know Mark Burton did that. Thank you.
Everybody's a perfect.
My, my concern is if, could we have a one pager, because this is long. It took you a long time. Do we have like, because you know, our legislators are very busy. We know they read everything, and, but they are busy, and so maybe you have a one page with bullet points if they don't want to?
We can create a cover sheet that just almost does what I did, but even shorter, of just saying, we oppose, we approve, we, yeah, we can pull that language out.
Although this is a very long. Yeah. Well, the wording is important.
Oh, I know. I, I want to have this with it, but I'd also want to have another sheet that they can just glance at instead of, you know, like that.
Yeah, we'll use the same approval or support language to create up all of this.
Okay. Great, great. Thank you. Okay. And then the first one, the budget, could we, because I, let me see. What, and Joel, either Joel, but what is our spending for student, how does it rate the state? Can you, can you refresh our memory and on the country?
I don't have that.
I got to spend, no, this is for Farrell.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Can we, can we get that? How we rate?
I don't know that we'd have a legitimate across-the-country comparison because the state funding formulas vary so widely. It'd be difficult to do that kind of comparison. We can get you?
For the state.
We can get you the state comparison.
Okay. Because I would like to see that comparison.
It'll be two years.
In special education funding on the second page, yeah, only fifteen percent. Could we put in there so that the legislators will know what the, what the federal government's supposed to be paying? I think it's what, forty-two percent? Or is it forty?
I think the, the VSBA item said forty percent.
Okay. Can, can we sum up with that? Because sometimes they don't realize that, that, you know, they're supposed to be paying forty percent, and it's always around fifteen to seventeen, you know?
Yeah.
So can we just add that somewhere, do you think?
So expensive parts in the fifteen percent. I'm sort of a federal government. We can add a parentheses there?
Yeah.
And just say of, of the forty percent IDA calls for.
Yeah. That'd be great. Yeah.
I don't know that many of them know that it was back in nineteen sixty-five, but I mean, they've never done it.
Yeah, maybe add that, too.
Well, we're using this in a general, you know, simply, this would be worthwhile for.
Has it not, has it not been reauthorized since then?
But they've never matched.
No, they never, they never had.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's never been matched the way they said.
They've been consistent and not appropriately.
Not, not exactly.
All right. So in parentheses of the forty percent IDA calls for, has called for since nineteen sixty, what was it again?
Five.
Five, yeah. Okay.
And then the dual enrollment. How do our kids that do the dual enrollment? I don't know who this question is to.
What's the question?
I know, I'm looking at Daniel's paper. I'm trying to figure out who this goes to. How are they faring in college classes when they do, when they're seventeen and they do a dual enrollment? Are they able, I mean, do we have any data on that?
You mean post-graduation?
Yeah. Do we have any data?
What is how they're doing in it?
Yeah.
We know how they're doing in the dual enrollment.
Yeah, I mean, after that, though, is it preparing them to keep going, or are they having to repeat, or do medi, what is it when you start?
Remediation.
Medial stuff when they get to four-year college? Do we, do we have any data on that?
We, we do and we don't. And we, the best data that we have is through the school clearinghouse, but?
I mean, is it?
It's not, it's not great data.
I was just going to point to one of the recent reports that was shared regarding perseverance once students enter college. You know, we had higher numbers of students persevering in the programs. Now, we haven't broken that out to see which of those students in turn were in dual enrollment. I don't think we have that data, but we would imagine that dual enrollment experiences plus AP experiences plus the other rigorous experiences are what helped them persevere. The only piece I'm aware of that we have.
And just to be clear, when I say it's not great data, I don't mean it's bad data for Virginia Beach. It's just that we don't have the data you're asking for.
And this is, and dual enrollment would be just for the students who are in our schools, our Virginia Beach schools? It's not for homeschool or homeschoolers or anybody, but it's who's taking classes in our?
Correct.
Schools.
The only, the only legislative language that's out there around homeschool students is that homeschool students have to have the same access to dual enrollment classes offered at the community colleges.
Okay.
Our students.
And so they would go through the?
And they'd have to pay the same, whatever, the same tuition rate.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have for right now, but thank you. Great, you see, great job. Oh, oh, I did have something on safety. I should have.
Okay.
Yes. That's what I called you about. That was my, my first one. The student safety, you know, I, VBCPS supports legislation that promotes alternatives to suspension and funding. And I know that we've talked about this for years, and I believe, Dr. Spence, you said there's a pilot program that you have or something? Because, I mean, just yesterday, when I was working with the polls, I had five or six teachers come up to me, and they basically said, like, I, I can't discipline my kids in class. I have, you know, I have a child that's, you know, and it's just really hard to discipline them and discipline, I mean, they kind of see it as a bad word, that we're supposed to be, you know, positive and, and all that, but there has to be a balance. So I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just a little hesitant, like, promotes alternatives to suspension. I mean, of course, we don't suspend elementary kids, that's the last resort, but?
We do, actually, from a point of view.
I mean, last, I said it as a last resort, of course, but I mean, that just, I don't know if I'm comfortable with that wording. I just don't want the teachers to feel that they can't discipline children, that that's a big no.
But this is an elementary level.
Yeah.
This is, this, the, the language specifically addresses elementary schools.
Right. And then, and all the teachers that I talked to, yes, are real elementary teachers. And, and we've talked about that because we do have problems where the assistant principal is taking his or her whole time dealing with a child that repeatedly, and, and it's not fair to the child that's struggling, it's not fair to the teacher, it's not time efficiency for the AP, and it's not good for the students in the class. So how, I guess my question is, what are we doing about it? And do you see what we're doing about it as part of this? Because it, I think it's a problem.
Yeah. So we are in the midst of setting up and establishing this behavioral classroom pilot, which looks like a January launch on that. And so that would be an example of, it's really not an alternative discipline practice, but it would be an example of a way that we can, in a regional setting, regional being amongst a group of schools. Take some of the more, more difficult students who have significant behavioral and emotional challenges, have them in a setting where they're working directly with their, and their families, working directly with school psychologists, social workers, and behavior management specialists. That's an example of something that would be good to have funding for.
Yeah.
And I think that that would be something that we could go up and talk about. Right now, we're just putting the funding into it to see if it works.
Okay.
You know?
I love that idea.
I guess I would go back to this thing of teachers saying that we can't discipline children. They haven't been told that. If they've been told that at their school, then I would direct them to contact the Department of School Leadership so that they can have a conversation about that, so that we could figure out the specifics of that. Because really, at the administration level, we've not said that.
Yeah.
And we've made that clear.
I think they just feel that. I don't think that, I don't think in any way has somebody said you can't discipline a child. I don't, I don't.
So I don't know why they would feel that, so I would redirect them then to talk to their principal about classroom management practices and the code of conduct and what those expectations are. And I just would maybe redirect them back to their school to have that conversation if they're feeling that way. Um, and then, of course, if they're not, Department of School Leadership, and then if that doesn't work, they can come talk to me.
Okay, um, okay, I will do that. Um, but I think that's a great idea. I mean, I, I love that idea because, because a teacher cannot, in the middle of class, be a social worker right there and stop class and, and all that. So, so what you're doing there with that pilot program, that would be a great example of, of extra funding.
Yeah, and again, that's not, I mean, you're talking about a relatively small number of children per school that, that's targeted at. I mean, you're talking probably one to two.
Yeah, one or two per school.
Students per school, but they can take up a significant amount of time.
Right, exactly.
So, and we understand that.
And this is rather vague and we know that. I mean, it doesn't identify what the alternatives are. It's just saying.
This also, I think this, I mean, I'm, I'm going to speak to the legislative committee because I'm not in there, but the, the, I believe this is a direct response to legislation that came out last year, which was, which was intended to tell us that we could not suspend children.
Right.
At the elementary level.
Yeah.
And we, at that time, spent a lot of time talking to our legislative, um, delegation about the fact that they just can't tie our hands like that.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Principals can't have their hands tied like that.
Yeah.
So I think this, this particular paragraph really is aimed at saying, if, if you're interested in coming up with some solutions around alternative disciplinary practices that you're willing to provide funding for, that we can have that conversation, but don't come in here and tell us we can't suspend children.
Exactly, yeah. I agree, I totally agree. Okay, I just need a clarification. Thank you. And I look forward to seeing how that pilot program will be the next semester. That'd be great. I think that's it. Thank you. Good job.
So with that, I just want to ask, with that conversation, are you comfortable with that language now?
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Manning?
Um, well, I had some issues as well, but I thought I'd start with, um, what Ms. Weems discussed. Um, I really liked in, in the student safety, the statement that V B C P S opposes limiting options to safely manage schools, including the ability to suspend students. I, I think that is great. Um, I had asked Mr. McDonald to further clarify where it says, we also need to help students build resiliency and coping skills through alternative disciplinary practices. Um, so my question was, what are the alternative disciplinary practices? And he provided me with, um, some proposed guidelines that the V B O E is coming out with apparently. Um, and I read through this and pretty, pretty mu-, pretty, it's pretty in detail. And what I'm reading, I do have some concerns about because while I agree with a lot of what's in here, I don't see how it can be applied in a large class size. And that's what I'm hearing from teachers. I've had a lot of teachers approach me as well who said, we just, we're not getting the support we need when we refer students. We don't have time to be counselors for the students. We just, we just really feel like we can't discipline. So I'm hearing that as well, whether it's coming from the administration or not, they're feeling that way. So I'm, I'm concerned about having the alternative disciplinary practices portion in there when it's not really clarified. If, if this is what it is, it's not really something that I support.
That's just a proposal that's being worked through.
Right, I understand. And so that's why, since there's, since there's really not clarification on that, I, yeah, so I, I would like to see that struck, um, that portion. Um, other than that, I'm fine with it.
So my only, um, input on this, and I wasn't, again, involved in the conversation around the drafting of this, but my only input on this would be, and it's cautionary, at the, at both the federal and the state level, there are both legislative and regulatory shifts in place which are intended to deal with the school-to-prison pipeline. And this idea that we, um, have disproportionality in our discipline practices and this idea that we over-suspend students, that we over-use suspension as a disciplinary practice versus other disciplinary alternatives, which, some of which are described in there, but some of which we've talked about, which is the use of a student response team and the use of positive behavioral interventions and supports and the use of mediation and some of those other things that we think can teach students self-discipline over time so that they make better choices as they're moving through the, you know. I mean, ultimately, the end game for discipline ought to be making better choices, like learning from what you did so that you don't do that again, so that you're making better choices in the future so you become a more productive citizen. Um, and I think the, the stance at the federal level and I think the stance at the state level is if you just suspend children, if you just rely on that as your method of discipline, what you're going to discover is that you're just going to continue to punish the child and they're going to be in a cycle of punishment and they're not going to come out of that cycle of punishment until they get to prison. And so that's kind of the, the cautionary note is if you don't take a position on this, you're going to get told what to do. And so I think, you know, we're trying to be in front of it, at least in terms of our, our internal practices, but I think the, you're going to have to respond to it from a legislative perspective because you're going to get more of this legislation that says you can't suspend children, um, if we don't try to. And so if you say, well, we don't support legislation that tells us we can't suspend children, I, I, and I'm not speaking for the committee at this point, but I would say you're going to have to say, what do you support? Um, that is different than what you're doing now, because what you're doing now, frankly, is not working from a, you know, purely data perspective at the D O E and U S E D, um, way of thinking. So, so just, uh, just something I think you might have to wrestle with.
Yeah, we took a very strong stand against those bills last session. And so for us to take a stand against bills that were, were trying to prohibit suspensions and then for there to be a, a feeling that we are, we, we do not want students to be disciplined who, who, you know, we're, we're talking about holding them accountable here, doesn't, doesn't quite fit. And, and, and Dr. Spence is absolutely correct. We did go to them and say, you can't, you can't tie our hands that way. There are other approaches to this. We're doing some work in Virginia Beach. You should take a look at what we're doing. You need to look at P U E and establish some best practices and discuss that. And so that's what's happening right now. And so I would agree with Dr. Spence in saying that, you know, we can't, I think we have to be a part of this discussion and I think that this has to be legislation on our delegation's radar that we can play a role in hoping, in shaping.
I, I think the third sentence backs up the second sentence. It explains why we oppose it. It's because we believe that, that, while we recognize we want to reduce the number of suspensions, we also recognize there are alternatives here and we should try them.
And that, and I support that part. Um, and it's the alternative disciplinary practices that I'm concerned about. If we look back at the teacher climate surveys from July, um, teachers are very concerned with the discipline, with, with discipline right now. Um, and teachers feel they can't refer students. They feel like they don't have the ability to discipline the way they feel that they should. And I'm just sharing what I'm hearing and maybe you all are as well. And that's what the data said as well.
I hear what you're saying, but I also recall from the survey that the number was very close to the previous year. So while it's some, it's not sus-
It wasn't. It was two years. It's only done every two years.
Okay, the previous data, there wasn't a huge, the reduction was minimal.
No, there, there was a, there was a significant difference. No, there was a significant change.
I, I think we have to, I think, I think that's a misperception that we have to battle against rather than a, a reality.
Does the climate survey was a misperception?
I mean, yeah, in my view, yes, because we, we know from our discussions, because we've, we've asked this, you know, does this mean that, that teachers shouldn't suspend? Does this mean that teachers shouldn't refer? That, that has never been, uh, uh, has, has never been told as, no, they shouldn't spend, no, they shouldn't refer. That's, that's not the point of the work that's being done in the division. Um, so yes, I, from my perspective, I do see that as a misperception. And I think that's something that we can, we can work, we're fixing. Um, and, but I don't think it's based in actual policy reality or what we're trying to do legislatively.
So I have, well, I have a couple of thoughts. So, so one is, I mean, we're, we're certainly aware, obviously, we brought you the climate survey data. One of the reasons you do a climate survey is so that you have that data so you can respond to that. And we're aware of that. We, uh, I think there's, as we build our teachers' toolkits around how else do you deal with kids other than referrals and suspensions, I think that, I mean, I believe strongly we'll see progressive, um, data in that arena. That said, um, one thought that I would say maybe, it doesn't tackle all these concerns, but it might be missing is, is being a little bit clearer about funding, um, what some of the funding could be used for. And so as an example, which might address the concern of, you know, I don't know how to do, um, relationship building and mediation while trying to teach kids, um, then we also, we have people who can do that. So we have really good behavioral management specialists and we have other folks that can come into our classrooms, mental health caseworkers and other people who can come into our classrooms and support teachers and support children while all that's happening. Um, we don't have nearly enough of them, so an, an example could be, um, including staffing for, um, for folks who deal with, um, student discipline. As a, as a, maybe a concrete example of a funding mechanism that we could be talking to the state about this day. So we could deal, we could really use support for mental health specialists, for example.
Which reinforces the releasing of the cap on the.
Goes right back to that.
That we had on page one.
Right, right. Um, more.
I'm finished with that, but I've got others. If, if somebody else wants to go first, that's fine.
See anybody else? Go ahead.
Okay, um, let's see. I really liked the, um, the position on unfunded mandates. I think I thought that was written very well. Thank you all for doing that. That's very important. As I'm looking at this proposed, um, agenda that we're going to be submitting, I'm, I'm thinking of how it's going to be applied throughout the state, not just here in Virginia Beach, because we're asking for this to become state law, not just local law. So that's how I'm reading it when I'm trying to apply it. And for example, the, um, charter schools and the virtual school topics. We're essentially asking, telling the state that we do not want them to have any authority to create charter schools or to be able to provide virtual schools for students if they opt not to go to public schools. And so if, if there's a school district that is, does not have quality education like Virginia Beach and parents want an option, then this prevents them to have funding for it. And I, I, I'm just opposed to that. Um, that's a, a parental choice thing and, and I, that's something that I'm opposed to. So I, I'm certain that I'm in the minority here on that, but I wanted to state it.
Well, it might allay your concern somewhat to, just to note that this legislation specifically just says, we don't want you to take away the local board's authority to approve charter schools. Because what, what was happening at the state level last year that Joel was referring to was there was an attempt to just circumvent you all and your authority to approve charter schools. There was an attempt basically to create, um, first, a standalone board for charter schools at the state level that would be the sole approving authority for charter schools. And the local boards would have no say in that whatsoever. They could just establish them in your community and you'd have to deal with the fallout from that.
Right.
Good or not. So you wouldn't have the, the authority to charter with them, to set expectations for them, to be able to monitor their work and make sure that they were treating the children in your community the way you wanted them to be treated. Um, and so this really tackles that. And I don't think it says we're opposed to charters. It just says we would be opposed to not being part of the process. And then I think the, um, the other piece about virtual schools, and, and again, the legislative committee could speak to it, but I know Joel and I have had lots of talks about this. We support Virtual Virginia. Virtual Virginia is an existing virtual school and I think that that's the language that's in here, which just says there is choice. It is, you ought to go through the Virginia, the, the Virtual Virginia program. And this is in response to the alternative bill that was proposed by Nikki Bell and it'll come up again to create a Virginia virtual school, which really is a private, for-profit virtual program.
But, but the Virtual Virginia, um, it's very limited.
It's not anymore, actually. You can now get a full high school diploma through virtual.
But you can't get elementary and middle school. So, in, in my opinion, it is very limited. It's only provided by high school and, and you can't necessarily get the number of classes that perhaps you would want. Um, so, and it does say any portion of state or local funding. It doesn't just say local funding. Um, so it's the state, any portion of state funding that I have the problem with. Um, and, and thank you for the clarification on charter schools. I, perhaps it needs to be written a little bit more clearly because to me, this is just basically saying that the state of Virginia, Commonwealth of Virginia, cannot create charter schools. To me is, that, that to me is what this says. So perhaps if it's clarified that we're not opposed to Virginia creating charter schools, that could be something that I.
If you could comment at the end without collaborating with local school boards, but, I mean, to make it clear, but I think it's.
Well, we're not.
And V B C P S is opposed to any legislation that would remove the local school board's authority to approve charter schools within its boundaries, including a change to the constitution or legislation that would give Virginia Board of Education the authority to create regional charter schools. That's going back to saying that we still want local school boards. If they're going to do a regional charter school, that we're asking them for the localities to still be involved in the process. It goes back. I understand there's a little chunk there, but.
Yeah, you would be a little redundant and restate that, yeah.
So any legislation that would remove the local school board's authority to approve, so maybe I have a problem with it.
The authority to create regional charter schools.
I think, I think that inclusion is part of removing the school board's authority to approve.
So if this was in place, what authority, it, you know, say that this, that this became a law?
This is a law. This is saying we'd like, we oppose any that would, any other legislation. This isn't actually a law, a suggestion for a law. This is a, this is a reference tool for our legislators to read and say, how we're feeling about this. But I just think, so if, if Jason was reading this and a piece of legislation came up and he would go, hey, wait a minute. Okay, Virginia Beach is not good. I better call my local school board to see how I should be voting on this.
Right.
Or what their thoughts are.
I should call, I should get in touch with Joel Anderson or, or Joel McDonald first.
I don't know. To me, it, it just looks like it's saying that we're opposed to charter schools. Charter schools. That's, that's to me how it reads. So I, perhaps it, I just, with some time, I could come up with some language that would.
So could you direct that then to Mr. McDonald and suggestions that you might have for him? Our time is, we've been forty-five minutes on this, so, um, unless you have any other pressing matters, I'd like to move on to the next part of our workshop, if that's okay. Do we have any objection?
If anyone wants to take time to read, ponder and consider, shoot me an email. I'll give you a call. Happy to come.
And it's on the, it's on the info agenda tonight, so.
Yeah.
If you, if you feel you have to restate your positions again tonight, you can, I would hope you, maybe not.
Maybe say, refer to workshop video.
Yeah, right.
Right, good.
But thank you for your input and thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you. Next, we have facilities update.
Don't touch it, Tony.
Two weeks ago, it was the down button.
Don't let a construction engineer get here.
You got a, you got a technology geek to black, but they're not allowed to touch this stuff. Thank you.
Oh, yay.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Spence. Um, we've got, uh, actually, uh, three parts to this. We're going to, uh, the bulk of it is Thurgood and we've got some folks here that I'll introduce in just a second. Uh, we'd like to take Q and A after Thurgood and then we're going to talk a, a couple of minutes about, uh, about tennis courts and then about the, uh, the Achievable Dream, okay? All right, um, a, a couple of introductions, um, uh, from Via Design Architects, uh, Don Fannett, the, the president of Via Design, and Scott Campbell, the, uh, principal in charge. Uh, Via's got a, a long history with us. They've worked on, um, I think the first school was Shelton Park, the modernization of Shelton Park, then Trantwood, uh, and then the Newtown Elementary School replacement. So, uh, really, almost, almost two decades, it's, it's hard to believe. Uh, and, and Judy Crispin, the P M in our office, who's, who's managing this project. All right, um, Thurgood Elementary School Replacement is a, is a twenty-eight point three million dollar, uh, replacement project. The, the building is, we're, we're hovering around ninety-four thousand square feet. We're, we're still, we're still working on that. It's, uh, designed to, uh, to hold seven hundred and twenty-five students. Uh, the September thirty enrollment at, uh, at Thurgood this year was six hundred and seventy-seven. Um, it's been down a little bit. Uh, we think it's relatively flat, um, over time, okay? There's the, uh, the project sheet from your approved capital program. Again, twenty-eight point three million dollar project. All but, uh, about five point four million dollars is funded in appropriations to date. Uh, so we'll get the balance of that funding, um, in the eighteen, nineteen year of the, of the capital program. Okay, um, similar to, uh, to Prince Am Middle School, we've, you know, we've been at the, kind of the project visioning, the, uh, the stakeholder input for, uh, for the, the better part of, of ten months. We've had, uh, had about fifteen stakeholder meetings. Uh, that includes six, uh, combined building and, and site design charrettes. You know, the, the elementary environment is a, a little more intimate. Uh, it's not nearly as big as, as the, uh, the group that we had at, uh, at Prince Am Middle School. Um, so we've, we've actually, we've done the welcome in the, in the library media center at, uh, at, at the, the current Thurgood, but, um, you know, really, uh, really good group. I, I tell you that, uh, Cheryl Zigrang, uh, runs a really great school. You, you've, you sense that when you walk in the building. And just a lot of really good energy, uh, in programming this building. Uh, and it's, it's still going on. You know, there, we're down into the, uh, into, uh, the program, programming of the individual spaces now. Uh, the building is, uh, we're approaching about fifty percent design. Uh, we'll, uh, we'll bid it in the spring, award it in the summer. Uh, we'll tear down the, uh, the existing building, uh, in August. Uh, we've talked to y'all before about the, the, the need to, to relocate the, the staff and students to swing space over at, uh, over at Hermitage Elementary School. Uh, we're in the process of, of working on that now. Uh, you've, you've probably heard a little bit about that. Uh, so we will, um, we'll, we'll move them out, um, in, uh, June and July, probably a little bit into August. Uh, contract will be issued by then. We'll probably have some mobilization, uh, on site, uh, and, uh, and do the demo in August and start, start construction, um, in the, in the fall of, of twenty twenty. Um, scheduled for a, or excuse me, twenty eighteen, scheduled for a, uh, a twenty twenty completion. You know, we, we like to, to, um, under-promise and over-deliver, so. You know, we, we like to, to under promise and over deliver, so we stick with September of, of twenty twenty. You know, schools in general are more complicated buildings to build today than they were twenty years ago. A lot more infrastructure. And so an elementary, we could build an elementary school in twelve to fourteen months. Fifteen or twenty years ago, I, I think of the Red Mills and the Ocean Lakes and buildings that we built when I first got here. Buildings were smaller, those buildings were sixty-nine thousand square feet. So there's a lot more in an elementary school today, a lot more flexible space. And, and so it typically takes about fifteen to eighteen months to, to build a brand new elementary school. Okay, so we'll, we'll get started this coming spring and summer. Just a, you know, a couple pictures of, of some of the stakeholder meetings. Really, really, just really good energy. You know, you sense that when you walk in a building that's got a great leader. You sense that from the staff and their ability to, to think about and express what ought to go in their space. I think Donna's gonna talk to you about this building is really about people. And so we, you know, it's been, this one has been fun for us over the past ten months. And so with that, I'm gonna have, have Donna and Scott come up here and talk to you a little bit more detail about the project. And then we'll, we'll open up the Q and A. We'll talk about some tennis courts.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Everyone see me behind the screen here, I'm sampled around the corner. So, so great to be here. I just wanna open up a few words and express some thoughts that we have about the work this school system is doing, the school board is doing, and you. I mean, it's just, it's incredible. And for us as design professionals, to have the benefit of working with you on these initiatives, it's, it's a real pleasure for sure. I think you afford the freedom for your staff. It's just very, very liberating and that's evident in the way, excuse me, in the way that we have to interface with them on a daily basis. And I think the innovation, innovations that you're permitting are unprecedented. So I just applaud you for that. Great things are happening and I think this is all because you are promoting greatness. So, so for that, I thank you. And it's, it's a true pleasure sharing our knowledge and growing with you through this type of a portal. So it's exciting times for your school system and for our office as well. So I'd like to begin the presentation of Thurgood Elementary School by revealing to you the valuable foundational process-driven work that we've been performing for you. And then I'll turn the building design presentation portion over to Scott Campbell, who has been project managing the design. So our, our presentation, it's not just about the building. It's about how we are making this building happen. And for Thurgood, we call it T-Good. You know, it's a big place. It's ninety-four thousand square feet with a bunch of little people, seven hundred and twenty-five of them, that are about this big, this big to this big. So you know, there's some, there's a dynamic and a reality to how you translate that into very interesting architecture. And it's also very tightly knitted into its neighborhood. And so the design that we're going to reveal to you today, it's a complete response to those three realities. And, and all of the thoughtful input that we've received from everybody that we've been working with and workshops that Tony just identified for you. So we really began with a planning paradigm that recognizes that each student is unique to the community from which he or she is integral and connected. This is a very important starting platform for design professionals. Just being able to recognize the, the culture, values, and homegrown inspirations. That is a big piece of what our workshops have been able to extract in the process of working with these groups. So the overarching goal is to integrate sustainability into the school, such that the culture, the curriculum, and the overall learning experience benefits seamlessly from the design, the shape, the texture, and the environmentally friendly, good-feeling spaces that we leave behind. So we are launching a net zero many school for you. It's, it's incredible and a really nice market time. It's really about your future. So the building, you know, it's simply one, if you think of it, it's one big fat support space to this sort of a notion, your future. It'll perform as a backdrop to the stage where the students are front and center. And the curtains and the lighting and the rigging of that stage assist in directing the attention of the teachers to their students. So we start the process with lots of questions in search of real visceral and core ideas of why is this important to them and what will define success. Keep looking at the slide and that's fine. My piece of presentation isn't about the pictures. Scott's gonna be about that. Finds about the words and how we've been working. So we ultimately, we ultimately call the findings that we've landed to date with what good looks like. It is T-Good after all. So by leveraging the four Cs, collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, and communication, we have fueled a triple bottom line response of equity, inclusion, and empathy. And I think you're going to see how that's revealed in the design proposed. Every child, every day, is the core belief for Thurgood Literacy. This is their message to us. Everyone who's been involved through the whole process, staff, students, and the community alike, will better understand how you make something that was never there before. And they're also going to have a transformative, transformative understanding and impact in their lives where this building is really online for them. So not only are we trying to see and understand who Thurgood is, but we want to help them see themselves. And these workshop processes are very engaging and very much supportive of that. So by sharing that understanding, we have found that common place for starting to do what we do best. I, I like to use the expression that, you know, doctors help patients heal, teachers help students learn, and architects help clients see. So in our workshops, we inspire them with lots of beautiful precedent images and other kinds of educational environments that already exist, just to help broaden their understanding of what's possible, to feed their imagination and believe that they can have it too. We showed them a few TED Talks with very exemplary buildings and examples of images loaded with ideas that represent the power of architecture and, and how good architecture can really change the way children interact. You have a few of these schools already implemented in your system. They are remarkable and completely exceptional. And T-Good will be very much of this same vein. The family of topics and requests and descriptions in the first meeting that we had brought, you know, the core planning group together. And I think on a level far beyond what we had imagined. They're, they are so excited and anxious and curious. But I think mostly they've started on this journey with the confidence and belief that this is really more than just a dream for them. So I'd like to share with you the voices of your T-Good staff and students. And so a lot of what I'm going to say to you here in this next wave is, is really their words that we have gathered. And these words have been the tools that we keep coming back to and revisiting to make certain that their, the values of these words and the meanings of these words actually take on life in spatial development and become a part of how the school is shaped. So we had a series of topics and prompts to get responses from them. So I'll just go through a number of these so you can understand kind of how fundamental and how we sort of dug down into the warmer, softer, fuzzier side of trying to have folks express themselves. So the first topic, for example, would be to describe T-Good's core values. We asked them to do this. And the prompt that we used for this was to have them describe a T-Good day. What is it like at T-Good on a given day? And so the nature of some of the responses we've received were like, every student, every day. I think that was the first statement that rolled out. Another one would be authentic, see themselves as fun, friendly, accepting, happy, sharing, positive, and stimulating. A second topic was describe T-Good's traits. The prompt for this was, this is a fun one. Think of T-Good as a person. Who is that person? What are their personality traits? A couple of those responses were Betty White. She's seasoned, has longevity, she's old, full of character, energetic, and a continual learner, flexible, and good at improvising. That's pretty powerful that these folks see themselves this way. Another response was Bill Gates. He's generous. A third topic was describe T-Good's place. And so the prompt for this was identify T-Good's attributes of its place. Responses to this were, our trees are old, beautiful, and reveal the seasons. So they really like their site. They like their home. A true neighborhood school. We are integral part of the developed community. The fourth topic was describe T-Good's authenticity. The prompts for this were describe T-Good's students. So these were fantastic too. The responses were, they're happy, they like school, they like learning. They're cool. They want to do the right thing. They have true grit. They're confident, determined, and independent. And we certainly witnessed this because they were in many of our workshops. They have big personalities, energetic, full of life, fast-paced, and tech-savvy. They're scholarly, they have high expectations, they're seeking challenges, they're goal-setting, they're engaged and capable. They're multicultural, they're multilingual, social, accepting, and collaborative. That's your T-Good family. The fifth topic was describe T-Good's vision. The prompts for this were describe your new T-Good home. So these responses, also very, very incredible. It must be open. It must be light, eco-friendly, and innovative. It should be like the Brock Center. Incorporate nature. Lots of natural light, 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 light. That was across the board. Bring the outside inside. Lots of green space, save and integrate the trees. They love their trees. Then moving away from the warmer, fuzzier topics that sometimes are hard to get people to react to, we move them to focus on the tapestry of spaces that will actually compose the more tangible qualities of their building. And so some of that exercise was actually inspired by this book here, which I believe a number of you have had hands-on or know of. It's published by Dwight Carter. It's called What's in Your Space? And if you have not seen this book or read it, I would recommend that you, that you do so. I'd be glad to share my copy with you. So these topics were describe T-Good's classroom. And the prompt for that is what's in your, in your classroom space? So as the book goes forward, what's in your space? We went through different spaces in the building and had them describe that. So the responses for how they envision their classrooms, lots of natural light, floor-to-ceiling windows, glass interior partitions, direct access to the outside and courtyards from every classroom, collaborative open floor plan, flexible furniture, ridable wall surfaces everywhere. The second topic was describe T-Good's fitness and play areas. And so their prompt was what's in your fitness and play space? Some of these responses revolved around nature trails, multiple outdoor play areas for various ages and skills, multi-sensory, multi, multi-age group spaces, natural and interpretive playground areas, outdoor page, walking and jogging trails. The third space was T, describe T-Good's cultural arts. Prompt was what's in your cultural arts space? So here they get into inside-outside connections to courtyards and project areas. They want views to the outside with beautiful scenery, collaborative creative space for group projects, integrated technology access and connectivity, and multicultural instruments. Two more here. The fourth topic would be to describe T-Good's library. This, they see as the heart of their school for sure. Everything in that building rotates around the library. So what's in your library space? Things such as easy access from all areas of the school, the heart of the school, flexible in its configuration and open plan for staging special activities for collaborative learning, separate teaching areas, large multipurpose instructional areas, and glass partitions for student collaboration. There were several more spaces. We just kind of went through the whole building in that way. And so it continues in that same vein. So what you're about to see is not something that we have just made up. You know, it's a reaction to what they have said, what we have heard, and that which is imagined to support this dream. Our design team goal statement for Thurgood Elementary is to provide a natural response to the future educational needs of its students and support needs of its leadership through demonstration with sustainability initiatives on all levels of design to inspire all who pass through this space. So Scott gets to reveal.
Oh, I'm ready, I'm ready to push the button.
So. It's gonna be down, down. Tony warned me about that.
That's not real exciting.
I know, I wasn't expecting that now.
Yeah, we'll go, look quick here. So this is just, the reason we're showing this slide is just to show you that it, it is kind of very neighborhood-centered. It's rooted in there.
We all know.
And Thurgood House, it's on the street. And so we are trying to make a historical tie to some, some of the stuff that's going on. Um, you know, around here. So here we are. So this is zoomed in to that site with Dunston Iron to your south and the view Cullen Road to your right here. And if you know Thurgood now, right now, they have this kind of pull-in parallel parking off of Dunston, which is not allowed and terrible. And so we are fixing that with a nice vehicular access road within the site. The reason for its kind of meandering shape is in response to some of what Donna's been talking about. They love their trees, love their trees. So we've worked very hard with our site and civil guys to save as many of these as possible. So these around here, this were artifact wall. That's where the current Thurgood School Gymnasium is with those letters. What we're proposing is saving a piece of that to kind of build a site memorial to what was there. And within that area is a nice grove of large trees that we're gonna save and make a nice seating area. As you move along here, main intrigue to the school is here with the drop-off. This kind of dashed lines, what that is, is a nod to the Thurgood House. And so we played with a couple of different ideas. But what it is going to be is a kind of planned representation of the Thurgood House. So you can kind of walk through it as you go into the school. God, they love the tie to the history and the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's awesome.
The rest of the building kind of tucks into the neighborhood here. And you'll see in some of the, the renderings, this is the one-story volume. And that's in response to a lot of the teachers and neighbors that we've met with were concerned about the scale. You know, bringing a two-story elementary school or partially two-story, they were worried about the height. And Thurgood is a whole one-story ranches pretty much. And so placing this close to the street with the one-story volume responds to the neighbors' concerns there. And then as you move back, this is the two-story wing, which is nice and tucked back in with trees. This central spine of huge oak trees down there is phenomenal. And we're preserving that to the most that we can. And that's become a central part of the whole concept here, that the courtyard kind of spills around that and the green area of the site comes out of that. As you move beyond, we do have some of those nature walks that were requested. There's a very desire to be every classroom of you to the outside, every classroom with a door to the outside. And we've tried to accommodate that as much as possible. It, as you can see, it is very nestled into this site. I think we've done a good job so far. So plan, just a quick walk you through, the admin. So plan, um, just a quick walk you through, uh, the administration wing. So as you come through is that Thoroughgood walkthrough, uh, as you get dropped off. Uh, to the right is, to that is the administration wing. And some of the changes and kind of listening to the staff, they, they like to have their clinic right there. They like to have their guidance area right there. So all of that's front and center. Uh, Cheryl likes to know every sick and hurt student that's in her school. So that's right there, front and center. Um, as you move along this wing, this is the kindergarten and first, all through, all in the one-story. Uh, that's very intentional. Um, so on this outside side, uh, portion of the wing, you can see every classroom has a door to the outside. That's required, but they do have that access and view out to the site. The central spine does open up. Some of these kind of square spaces as you move through it are breakout spaces where classes can come out, do collaborative work, uh, work with each other. And then they do have view to the central courtyard that the school is built around. Um, another important piece I think to note is some of these green utility spaces. Uh, what Virginia Beach has been trying to do is use these schools as teaching tools. You know, what does an electrical room look like? What does a mechanical room look like? How does this building breathe and work? And so we are proposing kind of having view doors through those so that we can teach the kids about what's going on in the building. What does it take to, you know, make this space cool? Um, moving along, you've got art and music along the central spine. Then this purple circle in the middle is the heart of the school. Um, the image that was up while Donna was speaking was we did this live bubble diagram exercise with them where they could plan out where the spaces go and that's what's reflected here. But what came very apparent was how many, how much these kids like to read and they love the library. And so that really became the central, central part of the school. Um, as you get back here, this is the two-story volume. So two through five classes are here stacked. Uh, gymnasium which opens up to a central stair that connects the two. And, uh, the cafeteria is with a stage in between. And that's so that they can use the gym for stage performances or the cafeteria for stage performances. They can have one or the other going on, such things and practice rehearsal. And then the backup house equipment, which is kitchen and services.
Can, can you go back just a second?
Sure, yeah.
Can you close that stage off so that the noise level?
Yes, you can. So there's a, there's a wall there and then it'll have a kind of moving wall concept.
Okay.
And that can be opened up and soundproof.
Okay, yeah. I'm just concerned of the, of the noise level for during lunchtime or whatever or.
Yeah, yeah. They, they ask the same thing. So we, we have a conflict. And then the second story piece, so what you're seeing here is all the roof, the one-story. Uh, this is the remainder of the two through five wing and then that central stair. Uh, this Makerspace concept does open up into that, that two-story library. So you can, those are connected. Right now they have like a little cubby tucked into their current library and it's very integrated with how they use it. And so we've allowed that to be like a mezzanine on that second level.
That's okay.
One last piece is there is a little bit of a green roof and a kind of outdoor deck and that the students can come out and, and also have classes. So main entrance and you can see a little bit, we've, um, we're still working on the design of that entry piece, but it will have kind of a footprint nod to the Thoroughgood House. So these little squares are actual kind of a column and outline of the Thoroughgood House. We'll work on that design. Another view of just that admin wing on the corner, um, court, uh, covered walkway that connects to the, uh, two-story volume and that main view of that courtyard. And we're trying to bring a little bit of green space into that, into the courtyard as well as some elevation change and then some, a couple of trees and playground equipment. So it's, it's really safe and secure in there as well. Uh, so this would be kind of a view of your main entry lobby. Uh, you could see a little bit here of how we're displaying some of the mechanical systems so that we can teach them how, what it takes to move air throughout the building. And then the top view is a kind of K-1 classroom. Uh, you can see the, the always view to the outside, doors to the outside, uh, view and light sharing between classrooms. And then these walls here are, have the ability to open up. Uh, the K-1 team, uh, teachers there like, like to team teach a lot. And so we have given them the ability to open up classrooms between each other so they can share and team teach. And then below is just a view of that central stair at the two-story volume. Again, this is like a breakout space, collaborative space where they can help learn. Uh, just a view of the gymnasium and that is that kind of stage wall. Still looking at, you know, what that material is, but there is an opportunity to make some of that transparent so you can see through that space, uh, from one to the other. Split that off and cover it with curtains for visual control. But I think it's gonna be very powerful. Their music teacher is super excited. Um, and then the library, the heart of the school with the stair up to the Makerspace mezzanine. Yes, there's a tree in the building. That is a structural tree. So, um, there's this company that harvests them and they, they actually have structural properties. So we're doing multiple things. We're bringing the outside in. And then we're also teaching them about some of the structural properties in nature. It's a very, very cool, it's one, one key moment and they love it. So the school is very flexible, the library is very flexible and allows them to kind of move. And that's it. Any questions?
Questions?
Yeah.
Anybody have questions? Ms. Ryan?
Yeah, I guess for Mr. Arnold, do we, is, do we have any other elementary school with this mode? So this concept of part of the school, one floor and another part, it's two floors.
Sure.
Is that?
Uh, College Park is, uh, is one that comes to mind.
Okay.
Um, this was actually the first, uh, the Platteville Elementary School in the Commonwealth. Some, some similar characteristics. College Park was our first elementary school on this journey to truly having flexible spaces. That's, you know, the one thing we hear from teachers, uh, and you, I think you see it in the older nation school is that the, the building wants to be flexible. So this is, this is a move towards that.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah, beautiful. Wow. Um, I guess the last few schools that we've done, I, I see the same thing around. And, and I'm assuming architects have kind of, if you, if you go through history of either school buildings or buildings, you can kind of tell what was built in a certain time. And so is the round thing the like thing now? Yes, yes. And is that cost effective? Is it, is it less expensive to do round? Is it more expensive? The, is maintenance or does that not make a difference? It just seems like we've seen a lot of round. Are we gonna see this for the next few buildings? And then, I mean, I think that's the architectural thing now.
Uh, I, I, I don't know.
I mean, I noticed that you used, you used in your, you know, in your, when you talked with the community, you actually used round.
Bubbles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, and it seems if you, if you look.
Like somebody had circles in mind.
Now this is the third one. It's got a lot of round.
It's got a round, yeah.
I, I wouldn't call it the architectural thing or the architectural flavor of the day. You know, it's, I, I, I told you a couple of weeks ago, we, you know, we figured out how to build a box a long time ago. And so the buildings that you saw built in sixties and seventies and then over the eighties are, are more rectangular, more traditional. Uh, the, the same exercise we went through here, uh, we went through at Kellam. And, uh, the, the designs you had processed produced about five or six different types of buildings, different shapes of buildings. Uh, and two or three of them were the traditional rectangular two-story building. Uh, and what came out of that process is what got built, which is a building that has rectangular square corners, but also has some, some areas that are not. Uh, and so the, the same thing, you know, here you've got a classroom where it is still rectangular, uh, but other parts of the building are not. Um, you know, it, it doesn't, it doesn't impact maintenance. Uh, it is, it's more expensive to build a building that is not traditionally shaped, no doubt. I'll, I'll tell you that. Yep. Um, you know, so, but the, the, the balance for us is, again threading that needle over building, a great building that's gonna be around for a hundred years uh, and, and being able to afford it. And, and that's what we're in the process of right now. Uh, that's, that's what we do for a living.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
The, uh, process described in coming up is very, very nice. But I know we're not building a lot of schools in succession like we did thirty years ago. But are we gonna do this with every elementary school we do? And if so, there's gotta be an added cost in terms of engineering. And I've gotta believe the growth in square footage from, is, is partially driven by as it was at ODS. And you know, we all know what piece of that pie that I objected to, but it's there and it's nice. But again, there's a, a fine line between nice and too much. And, um, I guess I'd, I'd like staff to, I mean, I, maybe not in the context of this meeting, but, um, again, what is the plan for future schools or, you know, are we beyond the potential for recurring floor plans for schools, which did save money back then? But again, it's, you know, a half a decade or so between schools these days. So maybe that doesn't work so much. But, um, I'm suggesting we have a conversation about that in the future.
And, and we, I will tell you, we do every time that we design and build one. Uh, and we built the prototype elementary school, we used it about a dozen times. You do that at times for, uh, you know, um, for speed. Uh, and the, the contracting community gets used to building it. It's a little more difficult when you're working around existing buildings, uh, and you have space constraints. Uh, and Thoroughgood is a perfect example of a site that is very small, unique, heavily wooded. Transportation and circulation is, uh, is driven a lot of what you see. It would be really, really difficult to build a single-story building here. And so, um, we never walk away from the, the ability to reuse a plan. Uh, I'm, uh, yeah, and a lot of that is driven by if you're, if you're doing three or four at one time. Uh, like we did, you know, you saw that in seventies. There were twenty-seven wall prototypes. Uh, that, I, I, I will tell you that this, that the, uh, the savings on the design side is not as significant as you might think. You still, you know, you still have to go back in, codes change. Uh, you don't have to do all the programming you do upfront, uh, but it's not as significant as you might think.
I, I have, Ms. Manning, you're next, but I just have one question, a quick question here. That, the parking lot that's at the bottom of the picture there, how long is that walkway from the parking lot over to the building? Approximately?
Have you shredded a bunch of your teacher materials? Is that why you're?
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking of, you know, we do have winter here. We do have rainy days here. We do have, you know, bad weather here. And, and so I don't wanna see teachers who have to drag, and believe me, they take home a lot of stuff. And I was one of those people who liked to get as close to the door as I possibly could to bring all my stuff back to school. So. In lieu of that, can you tell me how long that walkway is? I know it's just.
One of the things that we didn't mention when we were presenting the site design layout, um, that this drop-off area here also has a small area for handicap and unloading.
Oh, I'm not handicapped, but.
I think if there's an individual that has, uh, wanna give a day an exceptional amount, they can, a teacher can pull in here and unload and move their car back.
So how, but how long is the parking lot?
Probably about a hundred feet right here, um, you know, from the end of the parking lot, uh, up to the, to the building.
Most of our schools. I, I mean, I'm all for, for saving trees, but, um, if you're, if you can move that parking lot a little closer, even if you have to get rid of a couple of trees. I, I'm, I'm sorry.
People wear their Fitbits. They need those.
I'm sure they do. I'm just thinking about bringing all your stuff in. Ms. Manning, I know you have a question. Go ahead.
Okay, so I have several questions and comments. Um, first I'll reiterate what Ms. Williams said and a little bit of what Mr. Edwards says. Round concerns me. It's a lot more expensive. And I don't think that there's any, you know, really increase longevity of the building by making it round as opposed to square. So I have some concerns about the cost of that. Um, a couple of questions about the softball field and the low ropes course I saw on there somewhere. So I have talked to a couple of elementary school PE teachers who don't like having softball fields at their school because they say it's messy, the mud, and they really don't use it at the elementary level. Um, have you discussed that with the PE teachers and?
Yes, and Parks and Recreation have been involved in this as well.
So that it's a neighborhood thing.
It's a neighborhood thing.
Part of the, um, integration with Parks and Recreation.
And their practices there.
Yeah, they currently, yeah, they currently have and they, they do use it.
But to your point, to your point, it died, it died, we took it out for that very reason.
Okay, thank you.
And they just, there's like lighting that's only two or three years old that we are repurposing and putting in.
Oh, nice.
Is the, is Colin Road from the bus will come in?
Oh, right.
Actually, yes.
I love separating the parent pickup and the bus thing.
That is true. You didn't pull that out. See, it was complete segmentation here. So the bus is coming in on Colin Road in Independence and drop off this way. And parent drop off is down off Dunston.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and then low ropes course, um, a little concerned about safety. What is that?
So that is positioned back here amongst where the trees are. And it's actually very much what it says. It's very low. It's not high ropes and kids swinging on elephants.
But they can still fall off of those.
It's low ropes and little activities.
Slack lining?
Yeah, slack lining.
It, I mean, it'll be, this parent down version will be yes, and like a ledge that's six feet, a little walk thing that's six inches off the ground.
Okay.
Yeah, it's very, uh.
Okay.
Just not elevating kids up in the trees and swinging them around, letting them swing right out.
Everything, even, uh, site elements that we're doing have to be accessible and that's, we're very aware of that.
Okay.
And so all of that has to be accessible.
Um, and how much does the structural tree inside cost?
Don't have a number for that.
It looks really pretty, but I'm seeing lots of dollar signs with that.
It's one tree. It's brought forward as a very special moment in the building to kind of, you know, again, cap, capture and memorialize so many of the comments that we did receive.
There's lots of trees outside too.
So if I could get a cost of that, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I, I would like to, to know one thing. I lo, I love the design. It's beautiful. But, um, but I would like to know if there is a big difference in cost if you had made that square instead of circle? If there would be a difference in, how much the difference in cost would have been? I mean, you, you can still have a courtyard and have all the access of everything by doing squares instead of, and I kind of agree that circles tend to be more expensive.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, to that point, this, what appears to be a true circle is not, this is a segment. And so they're actually, it's, they are straight. All those exterior walls are actually straight, uh, to be honest.
So then each classroom, I'm gonna click to a full land here. So like what Scott's talking about here is that each one of these classrooms is a straight line, it's a straight line, a straight line.
I see.
Structurally, it's been worked out to be super efficient. And actually, every room here is the same size and the very same framing pattern. So it's highly repetitive and it's the most efficient it can possibly be from a fabrication perspective.
So it's literally the same box.
But it's still more expensive.
It's what?
Correct.
It's more expensive than a box, no doubt.
Yeah.
Oh, are we discussing swing space now or are we gonna do that at a different time?
I would think, I'm not sure. Swing space, Mr. Arnold?
Yeah, so I'd just like to know, um, I know that it's changed. The swing space has changed over the last, I don't know, maybe month or so. Has, have the parents been involved in that process? And if so, what has the feedback been?
The two staffs, uh, have been briefed as of last week. Okay? Um, and so there, actually I saw a Google page where, uh, questions are, a lot of what we predicted are coming in. Uh, we will have, um, probably gonna have a joint community meeting at Hermitage, uh, in the wintertime to, uh, to go out to the two respective school communities, uh, about how we're gonna do it, answer their questions, talk about things like, uh, transportation, food, PE, things like that, clinic. Uh, it's the, um, it's the second time we've done it like this in, in my career. We did it, uh, when we, when we tore Brookwood down. We moved in behind Plaza. Very similar. And when I first came here, um, believe it or not, Rosemont Forest Elementary School had, uh, thirty-six portals in the back, nine hundred students outside, nine hundred students inside for one year waiting for Glenwood to open. So we've done this type of thing twice, uh, successfully. But yes, we will, we will go out to the communities, uh, this winter.
Ms. Williams?
And they have sent a letter home. Like I got a letter. Hermitage, I know Hermitage has. Um, okay, so twenty-eight million for ninety-four thousand square feet, seven hundred and twenty-five students, people. Um, what was our last, um, elementary rebuild? Which school was it?
I can tell you. College Park, you know, dies under construction, College Park.
And how many years ago was that?
Two thousand and ten construction start, um, designed in oh-nine, uh, opened in eleven, uh, twenty-two point one.
Twenty-two point one? And how many square feet was that?
Uh, comparable. Uh, comparable, it's, it's in the nineties.
And the Dye expansion cost for the record again?
Actually, not yet, ninety, right at ninety-four thousand, so very similar.
Yeah, and what was John B. Dye, what's John B. Dye, what cost?
Uh, twenty-four, I believe.
Wow.
You know, I, uh, you know, folks, the, the cost of materials, you're reading it in the paper, it's a real thing. The conversation we had two weeks ago over the cost of buildings that were designed and built six, eight, ten, twelve years ago at the very bottom of the market, contractors were not making money, they were keeping the lights on. And so the market is turning. This, this is, the industry works this way, like everything else that comes in cycles. And we are right here in terms of the cost of materials, shortage in labor. And so, you know, the, the, this is the challenge for us. It's easy to build a building when the market is down. Now, it's harder to get things finished, but from a cost perspective, you know, we see a lot of benefit from that. It's very, it's, you know, the cost of materials is going up. And that's not gonna change anytime in the next year. So, that, you, you talk about conversations that we're having as an owner and an architect, you know, delivering a building, you know, that's the challenge for us.
Ms., Ms. McLeod?
Tony, you've always given us the number, and I'm sorry that I can't remember, it's out of my head, the industry standard for how much per square foot, or what's that kind of a number?
Well, the, the, we estimate the construction cost of this building is about between two hundred fifty-five, two hundred sixty dollars a square foot. I can't, you know, I, the, the market is changing so rapidly. ODS was, was about a two twenty-five dollar square foot. You know, the, the market, the market is on its way, on its way to a three hundred dollar square foot.
And then the other question I have is regarding, Ms. Manning brought up the lead platinum, silver gold, whatever kind of a thing it is. But again, remind us what this one will be, are we, is it, have anything to do hurricane safe wise? As well as the industry standard, if I remember correctly, has it been fourteen years? It pays for itself and it's worth the investment? If it's longer than fourteen years, then we don't do it, correct?
This is, we don't know the lead, we don't go into a building with the idea it's gonna be a lead platinum or a lead gold. We, we go in the idea, with the idea that it's gonna be the best building we can design and build and then it will, it will achieve a certain lead rating. We don't know if that is yet. We do use a benchmark of fifteen years in terms of return on investment. We know this will be a geothermally driven building like the majority of the buildings we've built lately. They have proved themselves over the course of the past six years. You know, we've got good data on that, I mentioned to you what Kellum was costing us. We've got three years under our belt. So, we, you know, we've done enough of those to know that the business side of operating and maintaining a building like this makes sense long-term. And this is not, this is, these are not forty and fifty-year buildings. These are, these are a hundred-year decisions, these are like building roads. These buildings are going to be your...
Ms. Felton, Ms. Felton's next.
I have two questions. You mentioned a breakout of space, and how would that look in an elementary school? Is that just a good talking point, or is it just something that they ask for?
It is things that they've asked for, both on the student's side of the house as well as the teacher's side of the house. They have opportunities now to have a couple of classrooms come together in a casual format and do collaborative activities. And so, there's a number of those sorts of spaces that are scattered around the building and we asked what they look like. Tony, would it tab a couple of slides forward there and go the other way?
The other way?
Yeah. We had an image of a couple of those.
You mean at the end?
Yeah, towards the end.
Okay.
Keep going. Yeah, so, this is an example of that sort of a space up on the second floor area. It opens out, well, actually onto the green, small green roof area that we have that students can access, but also get the ability to look down into the first floor space and the gymnasium as well. It's, it's, it has really multiple functions. It's a part of the corridor and the walking path, but it's a little bit broader in various areas so that you can have some furnishings and some props sitting out there that students and teachers can work on in small groups.
Do you walk into the halls of ODS, that's what you see?
A small little area, just kind of a bellow walk of the, of the circulation path.
Second question, you mentioned building or framing it around the Thurgood House as a historic piece of the neighborhood. And, and I've noticed that you mentioned Park and Rec that you collaborated with them. Did you collaborate with, did you reach preservation, historic preservation community as well?
We sure did, we sure did. We actually met with a young lady from that group. And we talked about some of the plantings that are in the gardens there and looking for disgusting trees to actually be able to consider transplanting from that site, from the Thurgood House site to this site. So, yes, we had a...
My interest about that is because we do have a program within the, in our division called the sampling program, and it does target the elementary students. And we just collaborated with, with historic preservation to make sure that it happens. So, I was wondering if that all came into play?
Yes, so we have, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving along, we do need to be mindful of the time, so, Ms. Rai, and then...
Mine's quick, it's just back to the Dye question. Cause I remembered you saying the cost did go up from what was anticipated. And so, it was, it did bring it up to twenty-six million, for the record.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Pearl.
Thank you.
Tennis courts?
Thank you.
Okay, there was, there was an inquiry from the Bicear on tennis courts. So, quickly, here's the, the project sheet from the capital program. That's one double oh-four tennis courts phase two. You see, it's a million-dollar project. You see that it, that it runs out of funding in, in year two. I think we're, in fact, I don't think, I know we're gonna have to look at that. So, I'm gonna show you middle school and high school tennis courts and then talk a little bit about what we're doing. Here the, here's the inventory of middle school tennis courts. We've got thirty-three of them. We've, we haven't invested back in middle school in about seven years, based on our school, when we renovated back in two thousand and ten, okay? High schools, we've got eighty-six high school tennis courts. Combined, we've got a hundred and nineteen tennis courts in our inventory. We have not built a middle school tennis court in my career here. We did at Beach Middle, but they were public courts, they're used, they're utilized. So, tennis courts are not part of the middle school curriculum. And so, we've, what we've been doing, you'll see that we have been renovating high school tennis courts, which are all lit. We, we lit Prince Sant High School, it was the last tennis courts at the high school level that, that did not have or had old lighting that we upgraded. But you see, we've invested about two-point-three million dollars, you know, over the past seven or eight years in modernizing our tennis courts. Parks and Rec cost participates at fifty percent at the high school level. They used to cost participate at the middle school level at fifty percent, they no longer do. Their cost participated twenty-five percent. We have, citywide, we have an excess inventory of public tennis courts. I think there are another sixty, between sixty and seventy, public tennis courts, like Owl, Owl Creek, Lynn Haven Middle, that are actually part of the city park. You know, so, citywide, there's an, there's an excess in inventory. And what Parks and Rec has said, we've got too many in total, we can't keep up with them. So, we have not been renovating, modernizing, middle school tennis courts because they're not lit, they're not part of the middle school curriculum, and we haven't built any in the past three decades. Now, what we are doing is, and we just started this, we had a conversation with, with Amy Cashron James Poll and the folks in PE about middle school, do we need middle school tennis courts? Probably not. So, we're in the process of evaluating, how can we repurpose, going back to middle schools, how can we possibly repurpose these middle school tennis courts down the road? What might they look like? Maybe we keep one at each middle school. Maybe we recapture some hard play court space. Maybe we eliminate three or four of them and we turn them into garden spaces, or open space. I don't know the answer to that, but we're in the process. That's gonna take us, you know, probably another six months to reach out to the communities and talk about what might we do differently with these tennis courts. They're just, they just don't get the use, they're not needed at the school level. And they're really, they're difficult to maintain. You know, some, and I would agree with you, the ones at Brandon, we've got three or four middle schools, Brandon, Independence, and Plaza on a scale of one to five, five being brand-new, one being need to be replaced, those, those three are at ones, we know it. And you wouldn't wanna play a tennis match out there. So, we've talked to Frank Penner's and the guys in Landscape Services. They do all they can do to maintain them, but the ones that are old like that, you know, I, I agree with you. They, they become, they become an eyesore, so it becomes, it becomes a matter of priorities. So, really, that's, that's in a nutshell where we are as it relates to, to high school and middle school tennis courts. I think over time, over the next decade, you will see us probably reduce the inventory of tennis courts at the middle schools significantly down to the single digits. Yes, sir?
The reason I brought it up is, one, even though they hadn't, it hadn't been resurfaced at, at Brandon, I noticed, and I, and Dr. Spence was actually over there with softball practice for his daughter, even though they hadn't resurfaced it, they put up brand-new steel fencing around it at the cost of, I'm, I'm sure, some sort of big number. Just three, three years ago, two or, two or three years ago. So, that's why I was, you know, not having heard this briefing, it's like, okay, they put up the new fencing, I think I would have surfaced and then did the fence, but I kept waiting for the surface, so. But I never, but I still didn't bring it forward until about six weeks ago. Their SAC said, "We use that for PE and we've got a wonderful inter-mural program that uses those courts and we sure like to have them fixed." So, that's, that's the reason I, I brought it up. And then, when we found out kind of what was going on, Dr. Spence and I both felt it was pretty important for us to know if we, any of us get questions about, why aren't you doing something about that? You know, our, the tennis courts at our middle schools look like facilities that are everywhere in other cities.
They're terrible.
You know?
And they're, they're probably fifty-five to sixty grand per court to go in there and fix it. And to really, I, I, Mr. Edwards, I, I don't disagree with it.
But the cost of digging it up, tearing it out and throwing seed down and then adding that to the rolls of the, of the, of the landscape maintenance is, is a cost too.
Sure.
And I was joking to Dr. Spence, I said, "It would be a good MBA analysis" because there would be a cost over time and at what time, at what point out in the future does it make sense to do one versus the other?
That's, that's part of our journey over the next six months.
Okay.
With four to it.
Okay? Anything on tennis courts? All right, real quickly, Achievable Dream. Just, just refreshing your memory a little bit, taking you back to, to about four years ago. You had, you had three workshops, you had, not you, but the, the school board, the elected body had, had three workshops, a retreat. You approved an MOA back in the, in the summer of two thousand and thirteen. In July of two thousand and fourteen, K through two enrolled over at C-Tac. The next year, K through three. The next year after that, K through four. And this past school year, you've obviously got K through five with an, an enrollment of just under four hundred students. I think the September thirtieth enrollment was, was three ninety-one to be exact. So, we discussed this actually last, last winter in the Building Utilization Committee with the idea that this coming school year, eighteen, nineteen, the sixth, sixth graders would move into a wing in Lynn Haven Middle School. So, what you see here are the middle school attendance zones. The, the red dots are, the, the bright red dots are the rising fifth graders. There are eighty-three fifth graders currently at, at the Achievable Dream. And so, the other dots that are kind of grouped together are K through four. So, September of two thousand and eighteen, the sixth graders will move to a wing in Lynn Haven Middle School. It's about five classrooms. Dale and Cheryl have, have been over there. And so, September two thousand and eighteen, sixth grade students from the Achievable Dream will move over to Lynn Haven Middle School. It has the ability to have a separate entrance, there'll be a space for administration over there. And so, quite simply, that's the plan for, for next school year.
And then, space-wise, you know, for seventh and eighth grade, so can you elaborate just further, just two years down the road?
Sure.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in, some of that's gonna depend on the numbers because the numbers are fluctuating a little bit.
Do you suspect that there'll be some students will choose not to do Achievable Dreams Middle School?
I, I think that's gonna be what we need to find out, right? So, we, because there are a number of those students who are zoned to be middle and they just might not wanna be part of Achievable, we don't know. So, we're gonna support Achievable Dream in terms of their recruiting efforts there. We're also going to do some community meetings at the Lynn Haven Middle School feeder patterns and allow students who are interested in being part of Achievable Dream in sixth grade to join at that time.
Have you already surveyed the current parents of the fifth graders now, what the interest is?
I had a conversation today with Lee Reeland, who's with Achievable Dream, and she said that the parent support for the current fifth graders is very high.
That's good.
So, that, so, I think we need to find out, and I don't think we need to make any decisions about the school for Achievable Dream that's in the MOA until we understand what their numbers look like, and I think we need to keep all our options open. And that's the conversation frankly that I had today.
Is the wing that you are currently moving the sixth graders to, if it did go to a second year, would you be able to, because you needed to collect more data and...
We would have to, we would have to pull more classrooms.
And is it in the same wing?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's really what I wanna know.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a first year and a second year plan from a space perspective.
Okay, thank you, that's what I wanted to be.
And we, you know, we looked at this thirteen months ago, quite frankly, in the expectation of the VUC. So, that's how we ended up at Lynn Haven Middle School, the size of the building, where they're coming from.
Yep.
There's, there's demographic science to that.
Mr. McDonald, and we do need to be mindful of the time, it's, we have about twelve minutes left.
My crack that the MOU assumes that we are continuing the program in the middle school?
K through twelve. That's what is contemplated in the MOA, and it's also contemplated that they have, that Virginia Beach finds a school site for the academy as a K-12 school site. That's contemplated in there, but it's also predicated on numbers. And right now, the numbers don't match what's in the MOA. And it's, like I said, I think right now the prudent thing to do is to move forward with sixth grade and then leave options open for us to discuss. And we'll have to come back to you all and discuss it because obviously, if we end up giving Achievable Dreams a school site, which is absolutely what they're interested in, I need to be clear about that, that's gonna require redistricting conversations for the students who are in current middle schools, so. That's a whole other conversation, but we're not there now.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you.
We are gonna have to postpone navigational markers until our next meeting. And so, we'll adjust our agenda, if that's okay. There's no objection, we will be adjusting our, our agenda this evening to reflect that we are postponing navigational markers until the next meeting. And when is that, when is our next meeting?
Twenty...
The twenty-first. Tuesday, November twenty-first. Okay?
Closed afterwards.
And we will have a closed meeting after the formal meeting this evening, in room one thirteen.